All right, we'll call a meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the coldest meeting of the year. Tom, take the roll call, please.
Mayor King.
President.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
President.
Councilmember Pashusta.
President.
Fisher.
President.
Waller.
President.
Baskin. Posma. Helly.
Present.
We have a call, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number one is a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number two is approving our minutes from our February 3rd, 2025 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under item number three, I'd like to recognize Dick Paschle was a long-term city council member. Jeff and I both served with him. I think he did five terms, 20 years on city council. That's a good poke. That's a lifetime. But Dick was certainly a value add for the community and very engaged in other aspects. But to serve that long on the city council, just want to remember him as he passed away a couple, maybe a week or week and a half ago. So we appreciate what he did and helping drive the city forward for the amount of time he did. So just in honor of Dick Paschle, I'd like to just remember him. So, thank you. Item number four is a motion for the consent agenda with the addition.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now, Jeff noted that we're moving from item four, no confusion for the audience member. We don't have a five. So five is overrated. So we're going from item number four to item number six in the public hearing. Item number six is a public hearing on street improvements on Sixth Street Northeast from 30th Avenue to 36th Avenue Northeast, project number 19106. Andrew, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I was waiting for number five.
I can see why you're thrown off.
We all were.
Okay.
Okay, this first, uh, is this the first street?
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. This first street is Sixth Street Northeast, and it is from 30th Avenue Northeast and extends about 1,800 feet to the north. Currently, the south 600 feet is gravel and anywhere from 19 to 20 feet wide. The last 800 feet is paved, but only with 2 and 1/2 inches of bit. The plan is to completely excavate the southern portion down to include about 6 inches of ag and 4 and 1/2 bit. That's a city standard. And 22 feet wide. There will be no curb and gutter. And then the northern 1,000 feet, that we will reclaim, 22 feet with a portion of the subgrade, the existing subgrade, and then also pave that with the 4 and 1/2 inches of bit. With this project, we will also remove, we have a tile line that runs through in this area, and it crosses. We have a concrete panel and a drop inlet right there. We plan to remove that and regrade with the remainder of the street. There are two inlets on each side, and they will collect any of the storm water. So we have some, yeah, the, excuse me, the storm sewer work there with this project. And then after that, we will pave. We will replace the driveway approaches, get them up to grade, and any boulevard restoration when we need it. This construction, right now, we have it pegged for May to early July. Looking at a project estimate around 160,000. That would be, that would be 140,000 in the street and then 20,000 in the storm sewer. That's really all I have. Do you have any questions?
Andrew, that road, when that was constructed, was that a developer developed it? And that's why it was not as thick as?
That is my understanding of the history, yes.
Okay. And didn't we talk about this in 2019, and we tabled it, and we're back? Okay.
We're back.
All right.
So you're gonna start at 30th Avenue and go not all the way north, just to the last house?
Just to the last house. My understanding is, the state of Minnesota owns north of that.
And how wide is it now?
How wide is the street?
The 22 feet now?
It is 22 feet, yes. The paved section is 22 feet. The gravel section is 22 feet, but it gets narrower as you head south.
Any other questions for Andrew? Counsel, before I open up to the public. If not, is anybody here from the public wishing to speak on this item number six? Hearing none? Any further questions? Looking for a resolution? Ordering improvement, approving plans and specifications, and ordering advertisement for bids?
So moved.
There a second? Thomas?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Item number seven is a public hearing on street improvements on 21st Street Southwest from 4th Drive to 12th Street Southwest, project number 25102. Andrew?
Thank you. Yes, this is from 4th Drive to 12th Street Southwest. It's approximately 600 feet. It is a standard width street. We're gonna call a full reconstruction project. It'll include a sanitary sewer, storm sewer, water main, as well as some tree removal and curb and gutter replacement, largely on the south. Complete curb and gutter replacement here on the south side is due to its condition. And then some spot curb and gutter on the northern half. So we are intending to do a little redesign in the sanitary. There was a, I apologize, I cannot recall which resident had extensively long service, so we are gonna tie it in in a more appropriate, more standard fashion. And with that, we will be able to remove a section of the sanitary sewer. The storm sewer will be removed and replaced. We are adding on, adding another little bit more here at 11th and at 10th to prevent more of the water to run through the gutter and across the street, potentially freezing and causing issues there. Sidewalk will be replaced based on condition largely where it exists here on the southern portion between 10th and 12th. It will continue from, for this section here, from 12th to where it ends about this property line. So we'll continue that. And then a continuation from 1,007 to the corner at, and then a continuation along South Grove Park. And with that here, just a little continuation of the existing trail to the playground. Once all that's done, driveway approaches will be replaced, poured back, and boulevard restoration. The timeframe here, we're looking at June to October. This comes with a project estimate of 950,000, 670,000 of that for street, 160 storm, and 120,000 sanitary. Any questions?
Thank you, Andrew. Counsel, any questions on this project on 21st Street, item number seven?
21st Avenue.
The 21st Avenue, but it's listed as 21st Street on the agenda, so it's Avenue.
Okay.
It is Avenue.
You're only putting sidewalks on, it's three properties, two owners. Otherwise, continuation through the park, then. That's the new?
Yes.
New side of that park. Okay. If no questions from counsel, open up to the public on item number seven. Is there anybody here wishing to speak on this project, 21st Avenue, Southwest? Hearing none, looking for a resolution, ordering the improvement, approving plans and specifications, ordering advertisement for bids?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number eight, public hearing on street improvements on 6th Ave. Northeast from 18th Drive to 19th Street Northeast and 18th Drive Northeast from 5th Avenue to 6th Avenue Northeast, project 25106. Andrew?
Yes, this project is a complete reconstruction as well. Approximately 700 feet of 18th Drive, 650 feet of 6th Avenue Northeast. We will redo the entire sanitary sewer. This will help us correct some shared services. Basically, people across the street were sharing a tea service, and it was dropping directly into the sanitary sewer. This could cause problems. This is something we want to alleviate. But with the full reconstruction of the sanitary sewer, we'll cover that. Water main and services will also be replaced. Storm sewer and structures will be replaced. And with that, there is a large trunk storm sewer that we are gonna realign and get up to standard here on the south end near 18th Drive, between the alleyway and 5th Avenue. We will do street and edge drains with some mains and service stubs. And then, yes, a full street reconstruct, ag base and pavement. This one includes entire, on 6th Avenue, an entire curb and gutter removal and replacement. We will be adding curb and gutter that is not existing on 18th Drive. This should help us with erosion, storm sewer collection, and even help with plowing. Continuation of the sidewalk along the 6th Avenue, and it is complete, it'll go all the way to 18th Drive from 19th Street to 18th Drive. We could not continue it down 18th Drive due to we only have 33 feet of right of way, and it's restricted as it is. All street, all driveway approaches will be removed and replaced, and then boulevard restoration. Timeframe here, we're looking at July to October. Total project cost estimate, $900,000. Street improvements would be 520,000 of that, storm 130, sanitary 250,000. Is there any questions?
Counsel, any questions for number eight? If not, open up to the public. Anybody in the public wishing to speak on this project, 6th Ave. Northeast? Please come to the microphone and give us your name and address for the minutes, and tell us what your concerns are.
Hi, I'm Christine Kuzpok.
And I'm her husband Travis Kuzpok. We live at 1902 6th Avenue Northeast.
Okay, thank you. What do you have for us today?
I guess my concern is just what are our options as far as the sidewalk? I just feel it just takes away the aesthetic of the neighborhood. Just didn't know how that works.
Sidewalks again. Counsel, sidewalks. Get it. How many, what are you adding here? The whole, looks like you replace.
Sidewalk would be added basically from 19th Drive northeast to 18th Drive, where the sidewalk will be extended.
Okay.
So the orange that we're seeing on the map, is that?
That is correct, yes.
From the corner all the way down to 19th?
Yeah. And is anybody else here speaking in this neighborhood? Are you the only ones so far? What seems to happen is, well, first of all, the city of Austin has a complete streets policy, where anytime we do a street reconstruction, we add sidewalks to it if they're not there. Now, that said, we've worked around the edges there when neighbors do complain or say they're just not for it. Sometimes it passes, some of it doesn't anyway, but critical mass seems to be the issue that drives it. So if, as I look at how many homes are on that street, and that affected, maybe it's 12 homes to be added. And have you talked to other neighbors? Are they just not here, or they don't?
They're just not here.
They have similar attitudes?
The ones we have to talk to, yes.
Because that seems to be what happens, is we have events like this where people can come and air it out and say, "We don't really want them," and counsel has a decision to make then. But I'm leaving it up to counsel. I don't get a vote, so I'll leave it up to counsel what they want to do with the 6th.
Another question is, I notice you're not putting sidewalk on the north side of 6th Avenue.
Same as that project on 21st. There were sidewalks on one side of the street, not others. Probably just, maybe as long as you have one path to the sidewalk or the curb, or, I mean, to the trail system, I don't know. But whenever we do propose these things, it does seem like one side of the street has the proposed sidewalks. In my neighborhood last year.
Side of the street, sidewalk's dead end at 18th Drive northeast and go nowhere.
Yeah. So this does rear its head every time we do a street assessment, sidewalks or no sidewalks.
You can also look at that on a practical side of the, flip the page and look at it more practically. We're looking at extra added costs. You're gonna add cost to a project by adding that sidewalk, and how much is that per property, do you know?
Do 5th and 7th have sidewalks, do you?
New sidewalk?
Yes, new sidewalk on 190, would be what, 18, 20, 19, 1902, and 1903. So those four properties would need sidewalks, and how much would it cost per property?
This project, it's not assessed.
Doesn't get assessed, but the city would pay for it.
Yeah, I've been 30 years in the instruction, in the construction industry. There's two things you can pretty much guarantee: overages and unforeseen. Now, if you can eliminate those costs on that sidewalk, you can put that towards those overages and unforeseen costs.
I think what becomes an issue here, and I know counsel's gonna speak to it, is accessibility and mobility of bikes and walkers and everything else for the safety. And again, I wish more of your neighbors would hear, because I think the volume of people matters, or the amount of people matters. It really does. So I'll turn it over to counsel for anything they want to talk about sidewalks here.
Well, I'll speak to why the city has a default policy of adding the sidewalks. One reason is, we're not going to be back down on that street for 50 years. And so we try to do everything that needs to be done. The one time we're there, we try to tear it up once and then put everything back the way we think we're gonna want it for the next 50 years. Research shows that households are looking for connectivity. They're looking for places to move that have walking paths, biking trails, and options besides just driving a car. So, long term, for Austin to remain competitive, it benefits us to have the most connected sidewalks, the most possible sidewalks and trails that we can have. And it is generational. The older generations aren't as keyed into it. The younger generations are looking for it. So, neighborhood by neighborhood, we have to make a choice between what the five neighbors who live there want and what's good for the whole community. We're not gonna be back for 50 years. That's why we make it the default policy. And you saw, there's a couple projects that were before yours. There was nobody here from those projects. Those projects will get sidewalk. I am convinced that it's good for the community for us to build those. I think it helps us keep seniors in their homes longer. I think it keeps babies in strollers safer. I do not like to see people walking on the street itself. I don't think it's as safe.
If I, if you don't mind, but it would make sense, and I get what you're saying and everything, but as you can see on that road, it's gonna stop right there. So anybody that I know, because I live in that neighborhood, you're walking along there, you're gonna continue on, and then there's no sidewalk. So I'm just wondering.
Not to mention that 19th Drive Northeast has no sidewalk on it either.
I think with the goal.
Right, so, but the thing is, when you're connecting and you're building, the argument is circular. Like, I'm connecting to nothing now, but now, but then when I go to the next neighborhood, they're gonna say, "Well, you didn't do them on 6th Avenue Northeast."
19th Drive Northeast, we're not done. No connectivity there.
If you're going to connect, you need to consistently connect. Otherwise, you.
If, 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 Krebs, Krebs, please, if you could, let's have a little bit of order here. Let Ms. Helly finish, and then you can certainly, we'll do this back and forth. Get all night, but don't interrupt people.
I, I'm not trying to make light of what neighbors want. I understand there's a hassle factor of having construction, and there's a hassle factor of having something then that you're responsible for shoveling. I think that this is one of those situations where we have to decide, are we a community? Do we make decisions based on what's good for the whole community? If we believe in connectivity, then each decision to connect is really important, because every time you make an exception, you just drive the, well, why do we have to do it? Because you made an exception over there. So that's why I would urge counsel that we just honor the policy, which the policy states, we put in sidewalks. When we come and build a street, we put in sidewalks. That's, if you honor that as a policy and apply it fairly across every neighborhood, then you don't have these fairness arguments that we keep hearing about, "Well, how come you didn't put it over there? How come you didn't put it over there?" That's my opinion. I'm sorry, I was maybe talking over people. I get a little passionate about this, but as counsel, there's very little point to having a policy if you make an exception every time one is asked for. Might as well just abandon the policy and stop pretending that we believe in connectivity.
Krebs, back, say anything to retort, add to that?
Policy only makes sense when it connects to something. This connects to nothing.
Right. And I think what the goal of the city is, we get that there's places that don't have sidewalk connectivity, but we need to start somewhere. And so as these street projects come and go, we'd like to add them to them. Again, as it goes, this, I've been on it for 16 years, and this seems to always be a feather that gets ruffled when you have a home that hasn't had them for 40-plus years. And we're trying to add them. I certainly understand it. It happened in my neighborhood last year. There was a lot of drama. But there's a policy. So I'd just turn it over to counsel for either more questions or a resolution on what they would like to do on this street project on 6th.
I had a question for Stephen.
Okay.
I asked if there was sidewalk on 5th or 7th, and just 6th the only one without sidewalk?
Correct. There is sidewalk on 5th Avenue Northwest, and there is sidewalk on 7th Avenue Northwest.
Northeast, Stephen?
Northeast, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yes.
You know, it's, again, as Mayor said, numbers speak volumes, and we've got one household of 12 here representing. And, you know, the complete streets policy, as you're hearing, was developed, and without the numbers to kind of back you up, it's hard to reverse the decision at this time, yeah. So with that, I'll make a motion.
Is that to approve the, as-is, the project?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Krebs. So we have a motion and a second for the resolution. Tom?
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number nine is a public hearing on street improvements on 25th Street Southwest, Oakland Avenue West to 7th and 8th Avenue Southwest, project 25107. Andrew?
Yes, thank you. This one will be just a 1 and 1/2 inch mill and overlay. It's approximately 2,250 feet. It's a standard 36-foot wide street. I can bring it up, apologize. We do have two spot, zoom in just a little bit, two spot repairs for the sanitary sewer. Notice they are two, where two services are. We found that this would be a good time for those. One of them is a definite culprit for our I and I, looking to find situations like this. There is a break right at the service, at the main, and you could see, from a video, you could see groundwater coming in. The other one is a similar situation. We did not see it on the camera, but it would be well worth replacing. This estimated construction timeframe, June to July. Project estimate is $200,000. That would be 150,000 for the paving and the milling, and then about $50,000 for the sanitary sewer repairs.
Excellent. One of our simpler projects this year.
Yes.
All right. Counsel, any questions for Andrew on item number nine? Anybody here from the public wishing to speak on this project? Anybody else in Ron looking to speak on this?
Just a quick question, sir. How long do you think the project will take? It's a standard over, right?
Yep. Probably about.
June, yeah, put your name on the record here, Ron, if you could.
We're probably looking at three to four weeks of work. We'll give them about six weeks of a window.
So you gotta do, will the whole road be shut down that long?
No. You'll be able to drive on a milled surface. So just when they're milling it, and just when they're paving it, would access be really affected? Also, the homes on that 400, well, the 500 block north probably only have one way out when those sanitary sewer spot replacements are happening, and each one of those should only be a day.
Thanks, Ron. Appreciate it. All right. Without hearing, nobody else? Oh, we got one more? Name and address, if you could.
Yeah, hi. Jim Schulstedt, 403 25th Street Southwest, right in the middle there. I just have a question. It's, you're gonna start and finish when?
Wasn't it June to July?
Yes.
Okay. And how long will it take?
I said about a six-week window, what we're giving them.
And where can we park? And where, we can't park in a street at all in that time, or?
It will probably sit as a milled surface for probably several weeks, hopefully not much longer than that, especially when they do have those spot repairs done.
It's part of the time we can park there and?
Yes. When they're prepping and when they're ready to go repave it, yes. We will let people know. There's several ways of contacting, hopefully contacting you.
Okay, and no sidewalks there?
Nope, there are no sidewalks.
Just a mill and overlay. I would strongly suggest people, people do the text messaging, sign up for the text message. I did it with my street last year. It's amazing. The city will absolutely warn you and tell you every detail when they're coming, when you may or may not park on that street.
Right, thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Appreciate it, Jim. All right. Anybody else in the public wishing to speak on that project? Hearing none, looking for a resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Before we move past the road improvements, I know the Foxes came in late. Your project was the first one out of the gate, so we dealt with it. But I'll give you an opportunity to ask, you had a question maybe on how the assessment policy worked for your area? Terry? No? I know we talked. You sure? All right. I've encouraged them to just speak to Mr. Lang on the assessment policy for that road out there on 30th, was it 31st? 30th. Yep. All right. Sorry, Terry. Moving on then, item number 10 is a public hearing on Nature's Ridge 4th Edition Plat approval. Holly? Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you. The preliminary plat for Nature Ridge 4th subdivision was approved by council on January 21st, 2025. There were some conditions in order to get that approval. Number one was that there would be final approval by the city engineer and Austin Utilities. Two, that a development agreement and civil drawings would be included with the final plat. The final plat will be submitted within six months of approval of the preliminary plat, that all the provisions of the subdivision code and permitting agencies should be met, and that any issues regarding a strip of land not part of the plat that remains as part of the Nature Ridge subdivision in the area owned by Nature Ridge Properties of Austin would be resolved. The above items, or those items and any additional issues have been addressed as follows. The developer will do a fee in lieu of park dedication. The nature center is located adjacent. That public space will benefit the neighborhood. A sidewalk will be constructed on the south side of the proposed development to comply with the multimodal complete streets requirement. The city engineer and Austin Utilities have no objection to the final plat as presented. Less than six months have passed since the approval of the preliminary plat. Proposed development agreement with required attachments has been submitted for council approval included in this. approval included in this packet. The city engineer will go over that development agreement with you. Nature Ridge Properties of Austin, also known as the developer, wishes to retain ownership and maintenance responsibilities for the approximately 30-foot strip of land, again, not included in the platted area of Nature Ridge Four. So this whole area is known as Nature Ridge, and this is the last phase of that subdivision, at least in the area that's currently owned by Nature Ridge Properties. The strip extends along Nature Ridge Two and Nature Ridge Three, Phase Two and Phase Three. The strip of land is partially used and may be used further in the future for controlled water flow from the land adjacent to the current subdivision. As a condition, also as a condition of plat approval, the developer would work with the city of Austin to transfer the existing stormwater pond and trail outlets, outlots to the city as follows. The, the trail and stormwater ponds are encompassed by outlots A, B, C, E, and F. And as part of that transfer, the developer will confirm through a professional engineering and surveying firm that the pond depths meet original design specifications prior to a transfer of ownership. Long-term, the responsibility for most infrastructure always falls on the city. Nature Ridge Four, again, will be complete, so it is important to address anything that may require ongoing maintenance and repair to make sure that the subdivision continues to operate as intended. And also as a condition, the developer will work with, again, with a professional engineering and surveying firm to correct a plating issue in Nature Ridge Third related to the mission of outlot E as it relates to certain blocks in that, in that plat. So the requested action is to approve the final plat with the conditions that I've read. The plat itself has not changed, so these were just additional issues that needed to be sorted out along with the final phase of this subdivision. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Holly. Council, any questions on 10A? If not, looking for a resolution approving the final plat?
So moved.
Second.
Tom. Councilmember Peshusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five-zero, Your Honor. Thank you, Tom. Under 10B and C is development agreement presentation. Steve.
Yeah, so first I'll just talk on item B first, and then look for a resolution, and I'll discuss item C a little bit. But as the area Holly just described in the plat, we've laid out a development agreement to build all of the public infrastructure for that, those 30 lots. It would be developing sections of roadway on 18th Street Northeast, 14th Avenue Northeast, and 19th Street Northeast. The roadways would be built to a, a local roadway standard or a seven-ton design. They'll include asphalt pavement, curb and gutter, aggregate-based sidewalks, and street lighting. Those are all called out in our normal development agreement standards. And then there's also criteria involved for the underground infrastructure, that would be sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and then there are petitions at the very end of the development agreement for installation of Austin Utilities' water, gas, and electric. All of those things combined for the public infrastructure and the lot grading or the site grading for these 30 lots are all called out in this development agreement for Nature's Ridge Fourth. Included in your packet, it does not have the signatures, but signed, signatures from the developer were dropped off at City Hall today for execution. So they are in agreement with this overall development document.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Lang, council? If not, looking for a resolution for item number 10B, approving a development agreement for Nature's Ridge Fourth Edition.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom. Councilmember Peshusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five-zero, Your Honor. Thank you. Item number 10C. Stephen, any more to add?
Yes. Now we've just approved the development agreement, we're gonna waive a bunch of items in the development agreement. So what's before you now is something new that has been talked about with council for the past few years, and this is the first developer, I believe, to, to utilize a, utilize the city as a funding source for the project. And anytime the city gets involved as a funding source, we then need to run it through our normal assessment process. We would, we would actually build the project, and then we would assess the cost of the project, 100% of the cost, back to these 30 developed lots. So in order to do that, and, and then we also want to ensure that the developer, who is the property owner of these 30 lots, doesn't object to our assessments when we come to do them in the fall after the project. So before you now is a waiver. It's an agreement of assessment and waiver of irregularity and appeal. This document was developed by our, our city attorney's office, and we're essentially waiving some of the requirements in the development agreement that call for the developer to get sureties and financial backing for the project because the city will fund the project and then assess them to the adjacent lots. One key part of this is the city would then recoup our, our assessment costs or our construction costs through yearly assessments that are, are paid by the property owner, in this case the developer, paid back each year at tax time. Once a lot sells, once the developer sells a lot to a builder or a, a future homeowner, then that entire assessment would need to be paid in full. So we'll either get our money back over time, over a 15-year assessment period, or we would get it back once that lot sells, and hopefully if housing continues to progress in this area as it has, we would see our, our payments coming back to us much before the 15-year timeline. So with that, this is something new for a, a, a development project like this, but we would recommend that the council approve the agreement of assessment and waiver of irregularity and appeal.
Very good. I appreciate it. Very creative. Any questions for Mr. Lang? Looking for a resolution on 10D.
So moved.
Second.
Tom. Councilmember Peshusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five-zero. Thank you, Tom. On to petitions and requests. Item number 11 is a resolution, I'm looking forward for setting the public hearing for March 17th, not the 18th, March 17th, 2025, for street improvement project assessments.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom. Councilmember Peshusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five-zero, Your Honor. Thank you. Item number 12 is a resolution approving an airport farm lease with Dave Morris. Stephen.
We have a couple of small parcels of property that are located adjacent to other Dave Morris plots of land, and it just seemed appropriate over the past 15 years to just expand his fields into our smaller areas. These properties were purchased during the airport expansion in the mid-2000s. They're not used for an airport need, so they are actually farmed and maintained in that manner. Before you is a three-year agreement continuing with Dave Morris, continuing at the same rate it has been of $225 per acre, and we would recommend approval of the proposed lease agreement.
Thank you, Stephen. Council, any questions? Looking for a resolution approving 12.
So moved.
Second.
Tom. Councilmember Peshusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five-zero, Your Honor. Thank you, item number 13 is a resolution approving an airport T-hanger grant. Stephen.
Yes, this is a matching grant to go along with a, a recently approved grant that council did a couple meetings ago. It's all part of our funding package that we have planned and in place for the T-hanger project. It was a very extensive funding package that went out over a couple years with pre-spending some dollars, paying some dollars back to other communities, also getting future state and federal grants, and this is part of that. So we would recommend approval of this grant.
Council, any questions? Looking for a resolution on item number 13?
So moved.
Second.
Tom. Councilmember Peshusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five-zero, Your Honor. Thank you. Item number 14 is a resolution approving addendum number one to the wastewater treatment plant levy design. Stephen.
Yeah, so as you can see, we've been working on this for about five years, and, and reasons for a long design like this mainly revolve around the wastewater treatment plant project itself, focusing on that project and then filling in where we can do this levy project. We do have funds in place for this, construction of this levy project that was approved about 14 months ago or so, when we invited Pat Lynch to our council meeting and recognized him. That's when the, the state funding came into play for this project. But circling back, anytime we're working on a project for over five years, plans change, ideas change, and we're trying to make improvements, think of new ideas to make the project better. Anytime we have those changes, there's real costs associated with that that the designer may need to redesign a portion of, of something that they've already done. So that's what's happened in this case, as we've refined the plan over the years to make it fit better with the overall site. There's been some redesigns, and some costs have been associated with that. One new cost for them is the muscle and plant survey. We have to, it was flagged as part of our federal review that we have to review the waterway for a certain type of muscle, and we also need to review the stream banks for certain types of plants to make sure that we are not impacting them. So that is something new. But with that, we would recommend approval of this addendum in the amount of $159,500 for SEH and work to be completed to finalize the plans and specs for this, Phase One of this project.
Very good. Thank you, Stephen. Council, any questions? Looking for a resolution approving the addendum?
So moved.
Second.
Tom.
Councilmember Peshusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five-zero, Your Honor. Thanks, Tom. Item number 15 is a motion approving the 2025 firework contact, contract. Tom.
We received the contract from Flashing Thunder Fireworks, who's done our fireworks for the last several years here in town. There was a slight price increase for 2025. The total contract's at $36,000. The city budget's 10. The Hormel Foundation has given us $23,000, and the Eagles Club donated three grand to help bridge the gap. So with that, we request council approval to sign the agreement.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Council, any questions on this? Otherwise, looking for a motion accepting or approving the 2025 firework contract.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? And motion carries. Item number 16 is a resolution approving a parking lot lease with Mauro County. Craig.
Thank you, Mayor members. As you know, we've had an agreement with Mauro County to utilize the parking lot, which was on the former Austin Daily Herald site. We're continuing that for another year. Same terms apply. Moving forward, we're asking for it to change in that it automatically renews unless there's notice from either party. We also are changing the notice from 90 days to 30 days. Otherwise, they're still responsible for maintenance and snow removal and pay us the amount of whopping $950.
Very good.
Be happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions for Mr. Clark? Otherwise, looking for a resolution approving the parking lot lease?
So moved.
Second.
Tom. Councilmember Peshusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five-zero, Your Honor. Thank you. Item number 17 is a resolution renewing a joint powers agreement for the internet crimes against children's, children task force. McKeek.
Yeah, this would be at least our second renewal. I know we had this joint powers agreement when Mark Hader, Detective Mark Hader, worked with the Minnesota BCA on these types of crimes. Derek Ellis has been our liaison with the Minnesota BCA since he came on board as a detective. He remains in that role. We do have a good partnership with them, and this is just part of the package that we need to preserve that working relationship with the Minnesota BCA on these types of crimes.
Very good. Thanks, Chief. Council, any questions? I was looking for a resolution renewing the joint powers agreement.
So moved.
Second. Tom. Councilmember Peshusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five-zero, Your Honor. Thank you, Tom. Item number 18 is a resolution accepting these donations to the city of Austin. Terry Dorsey, a gift of $50 for the flowers, and Ralph and Judy Peston, and also for the flower program at $100. So with that, we appreciate the generosity, recognize them, looking to, for a resolution accepting those donations.
So moved.
Second.
Tom. Councilmember Peshusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five-zero, Your Honor. Thank you, Tom. On to citizens addressing the council. Anyone in the chambers here tonight looking to speak to the council on items that weren't on the agenda? Hearing none? Looking, any comments? Cindy, it's your last honorary council member event here. Do you have any closing comments?
I do.
Okay.
I'd like to thank everybody for allowing me to be this term of honorary city council member, but I also have just some questions on the agenda for tonight. Going back to number eight, the public hearing on the street improvement on Sixth Avenue Northeast with that couple that was here, I do understand their concerns there, and then I had some questions. I understand it's also the policy with the sidewalk, but as you stated, you won't go back there in fifty years. Okay, so then why is the sidewalk not going to be completed where they said it ends here? That's the only sidewalk. It's not going to be on the other side. Who's going to incur those costs? Just those twelve residents?
There's no.
Because it's going to benefit those, if it's policy, it's going to benefit those in the area, so is that whole neighborhood going to incur that cost?
So the city policy has been your first sidewalk is free.
Okay.
If I understand correctly.
Everybody in town pays for it, in other words.
In other words, yes. Everyone in town pays for the first time your sidewalk, and then when we come back and do repairs or have to replace it, then you're assessed it.
Okay, that, that's good to hear.
And, and that's for a fairness reason, yeah.
So if you're not going to go back in fif- for fifty years, per se, and like you said, why wouldn't they just complete the sidewalk all the way down?
Stephen, do you want to speak to that?
It's, it's as we're doing the road projects.
Because it's difficult enough just to get it on one side. And once, once we get it on one side, we feel that we've provided an off-road option for walkers and folks on mobilized, motorized scooters, things like that, so our goal is, we would like to have it on both, but we feel that one side is better than none, so that's why we're generally propose it on one side if there is not any.
Okay. Thank you. And then my other question will be, I guess, directed to you again, Steve. So in number ten, for that Nature Ridge Fourth, Fourth Edition, so when you say the city's going to fund it because, where's, where are these funds coming from?
That's actually Tom.
She said Steve. So we have a capital improvement revolving fund, so when we do a street project, we levy a dollar amount down the middle of the, of the street, and we get collections from over the years from assessments. So we're going to try something new this year with this one, in that we're going to fund it out of that, out of that fund, and then you, as those assessments come back, and we replenish the fund. As I've talked to staff about this, we're going to try it because I can't fund a whole lot of these because we don't have, you know, millions of dollars in this fund to do those projects. So this is like a, a trial project, basically using fund balance or dollars we've, we've banked up over the year, and we revolve into other street projects.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I ask those questions just because when I asked questions on the second meeting about tax abatement and the tax levy, and they can ask to extend that tax abatement stuff, so I just ask them where these funds are coming from to see how much of a burden it's going to be for the community.
And this will probably be, what, million and a half of cash out the door that we, you know, in theory, we'll get one fifteenth back every year, and then if a lot sells, we'll get the immediate payment back based on what the actual assessment is. And again, we're just trying it out, helping the developers out to get the infrastructure out there because we need the single-family homes, and sometimes it's easier to work with us with our assessment policy than having to go to the bank and try to finance that in the private markets these days. So we're giving it a shot. We're giving it a trial run.
Craig, do you have something?
Yeah, just to add to that, that, Tom, added that second part, but trying to find the balance, the hardest thing for developers is to come up with that capital cost for the infrastructure. So as Tom mentioned, we want to try to see more single-family homes constructed, so we're trying to extend and olive branch and making that more palatable while at the same time, over the fifteen-year period, we're still made whole, and we have the interest coming in for that, that comes in to make sure that the city's taken care of in their general, subsidizing it long-term.
Okay. I mean, and I see that too, you know, in all these developments and housing coming in, but for economic growth too, what about businesses? I mean, we don't really, to me, I don't see, you know, we have a Marshalls and we have a Runnings and Walmart. Are we trying to do anything to bring other businesses?
We are. We're primarily focused on manufacturing, so in our Creekside Business Park, we sought, I think, over four million in grants for the infrastructure to connect east side to the west side there, so that those costs, generally the Port Authority has taken a, passing along the benefit of getting those grant dollars, so it makes it more affordable and more attractive for somebody to locate their manufacturing facility in the Creekside Business Park.
Okay, thank you.
The, the general philosophy has been that city and local government should incentivize manufacturing and other higher-paying jobs with the idea that retail will follow. I have an opinion on if that is the right strategy or not, but that's been the Austin strategy for decades.
For run of Nature's Ridge, our security for the taxpayers is the land. If for some reason it doesn't, you know, they don't make payment on the assessments, that's our, our security is that land will be ours.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else, Cindy?
Nope, that is.
Very good. Thank you, and thanks for your six, six meetings with the city council. Last two of them was sick, but five's good, and I guess we're okay. So thank you for joining us as the honorary council member.
Paul? I would like to thank Sergeant Mike Fisher for his eighteen and a half years of service as retiring soon. Thank you for all those years of dedication and making our community safe, as well as thank you to all the city employees for what you do every day to make this city function. So thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Joyce?
Also, Mike Fisher, congratulations and thank you, and it's been a rough couple weeks, I know, for APD and Austin Fire as well, so thanks for all you guys do and keep us safe out there.
Very good. Thanks, Joyce. Laura?
I wanted to announce that Fourth Avenue Fest is scheduled for Wednesday, June fourth, four to seven PM. This seems like a really good night to remind everybody that June is coming. We will actually want to go to Open Swim or take a canoe out into Mill Pond, so mark your calendars now. I also wanted to especially thank the Eagles Club for their contribution to our fireworks and just point out that, you know, we're here twice a month, and I don't know that, that a meeting goes by, that we don't have some community partner that has contributed to the city, usually with dollars, but in other ways as well. And so nationally right now, I see some chatter about people who, who believe that they live separately from their communities, and I just think that's an illusion. I think we're all connected and we're all well-served when we pool our resources into things like fire protection, law enforcement, parks, libraries. We are, we know this in Austin, right? We know our neighbors, we know we're connected, and I will just keep talking about that and how it is to our benefit for as long as I have to, so. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Laura. Jeff?
Yes, there was a library board meeting last week. They wanted to thank Tom Dankert for coming and walking them through the budget. They really appreciate his time and expertise in explaining that. The library has struggled with staff shortages lately due to illnesses and leaves, so they are exploring new options around cross-training, minimum staffing requirements to be open to the public, et cetera, and what they need to adjust to. Library Legislative Day is coming up this Thursday, the twentieth. Julian Nataya will be attending with a group of Selco people. The use of our four study rooms and group room has increased from a high of one-thousand-two-hundred-and-four uses in two thousand nineteen to two thousand fifteen uses last year, increase of sixty-seven percent. Wow. Also, as the mayor mentioned earlier, Dick Paschal, former council member, passed away. I was made aware of this just last week, late last week, by his son, Scott Paschal, who also served on the council for a term or two, and.
And licensed.
And enjoyed, enjoyed serving with Dick. He was always passionate about serving his constituents, and I guess it was shown by the fact that he was re-elected so many times, and so passionate about serving the city of Austin, so he will be missed.
Thank you, Jeff.
Nothing, your honor.
Just a tag on Jeff, so we, we have a lot of, you know, Dick Paschal memories, and I know one is every time the Hormel Foundation grants come up, Tom's got to explain what number ten and whatever number one means because as the ranking, ranking goes, Dick Paschal had.
There was our, our way of ranking, and there was the Dick Paschal ranking.
That will forever be in council memory and Laura, so we do, we do remember some great times with Dick Paschal, so, and also I know Julie has something.
Yeah, good evening. I just have a couple informational things for you tonight, not enough for a work session, so I'm just going to slip them in here quick. As Jeff mentioned, we gave the library board some information on our annual study room use. This isn't our meeting rooms, our large and small meeting rooms, just our study rooms. And from the chart, you can see that between two thousand fifteen and two thousand nineteen, we were already seeing an increase in the two small study rooms that we had. They're one-to-three-people rooms, back there kind of tucked behind the desk, kind of dark. So we had talked about in our construction project of creating new spaces. In two thousand twenty, obviously, we were closed for COVID. In two thousand twenty-one, we still weren't quite getting people back. Of those two rooms, in two thousand twenty-two, we did add a virtual meeting space, so there is a laptop that's available, and it, we put padding up on the walls to make it more soundproof, but still not a whole lot of use in two thousand twenty-two. But in two thousand twenty-three, we did that construction project. We added two small meeting rooms for studying that could be used between one and four people, and then a group study room as well. And you can see that in two thousand twenty-four, then our numbers jumped up to two thousand fifteen. That's not people, that is just occurrences of use. So each of those occurrences had anywhere from one to three, one to four, or one to ten people in those meeting rooms. So we just wanted to show that, that, that study room use, those free rooms that can be used at the library are getting used all the time. So that was the one piece. The other piece was just an informational bit. Again, it is Library Legislative Week this week, and the, the library directors had gotten together to gather information on what federal funding looks like for the libraries and what kind of happens if that freezes.